This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 3, 2023, Southway Hill Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hill Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for public access. At this time, I'm going to ask our township manager, Tom Pertrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the chance to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, we do have two items already presented on our agenda. Before I call the first one to the podium, I'd like to first ask if there's anyone in the audience who is not listed on the agenda for courtesy that would like to address the board to please come forward at this time? Is there anyone online, Dave? Okay, very good. Thank you. So moving on to Courtesy of the Floor, Agenda Item A. We have a conceptual plan, Apartments at Cedar Creek zoning amendment from Dr. Khan. If you'd like to please come up to the podium. If you would just please make sure the microphone's on. Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Paul Suzak. I'm with Benchmark Engineering. And Dr. Khan is with me this evening.
Good evening.
We wanted to present to you a concept for a development of a tract. It is a 310-unit apartment complex in this land. Most of this land, it's bordered by industrial. It's actually zoned for industrial. But there is quite a bit of residential indoor assisted living. About 40 acres tract of land. It's got a stream running through the middle of it. It's got several power lines running through it. A lot of wetlands, about 10 acres. It's bordered by the Turnpike and then our industrial land. When we took a look and studied this property, although you can use it for industrial, it will disturb large amounts of environmentally sensitive land. It is permissible. We could get permits to do it and things. But we started looking at a different concept that you sort of have built into your ordinance with a few exceptions that we might need help with, and it's to develop this apartment complex. And what this really does to this is we're only going to disturb about nine acres of a 40-acre tract to get this density in here. It's tucked away in the back. You'd probably never see it from the roads because we intend to leave almost everything else in its natural state. There is a main road, there are main driveways, should I say, that we build this off of. And that was contemplated, I think it's in your master plan, that someday maybe that road could get through and get over to 309. This could be part of that connection. 310 units, different sizes, anywhere from studios up to maybe possibly three-bedroom, quite a few private garages, all kinds of amenities on site. We can meet all the requirements of the ordinance in terms of recreational and passive uses that the site needs. We're also proposing along the Turnpike portion of the site, solar field, which would be used to primarily power this facility. And if there's any excess, obviously throw it back on the grid. So we're trying to really take this environmentally sensitive parcel and protect it and get some use out of it. It's been on the market for over 10 years. And it's a challenge to develop in its current zoning use. But we think this is a good alternative, and we wanted to present it to you and get your feedback on it.
Very good. Thank you. Before I open it to the board for questions, I did want to ask our township manager if you had any comments or guidance for the board.
Yes, I do. So the township has just recently adopted its comprehensive plan, and we're about to embark on the comprehensive project to look at the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. So I thought it would be prudent to pull out some items from the comprehensive plan that would provide guidance to the Board of Commissioners on this type of request. So the first thing I wanted to identify was that the overall goal of the comprehensive plan was to guide future growth in a harmonious manner that preserves the character and community of Southway Hill Township, which, you know, brings the question of a high-density apartment use next to an existing commercial industrial use. It would raise the question whether that's consistent. The plan also promotes the utilization of place types in guiding future development. The future land use of the proposed tract listed in the comprehensive plan was for industrial, and the industrial land use does call out a recommendation for buffering to be proportionate to the degree and impact and intensity of the development, thereby indicating that any type of residential housing would have to be buffered from any type of industrial uses. It also promotes, the plan overall promotes techniques to limit the sprawl of development, promotes the protection of existing natural features and environmentally sensitive areas. And also just wanted to call out the fact that an apartment use is already provided for in the R10 zone. And the township would need to look at the global impacts of amending its zoning ordinance in this matter.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I don't know if either Greg Adams or Attorney Zader, were there any other comments that you might have for the board before we open for comments?
I would just say from a legal perspective, whether to proceed with the request that Mr. Suzak has made, Dr. Khan has made, is an item of discretion with the board. There's no legal requirement on where the other is to where you go from here.
Thank you. Do you have anything for the board?
I would agree with that, but unless you have specific questions, I think the memo I wrote and the presentation stands.
Very good. Well, thank you for your comments, Tom, Attorney Zader, and Greg. One of the thoughts that I had when I looked at this request was in tandem with Tom, what you had explained about the comprehensive plan that we are, it has been adopted. Our next step is to, I believe we've begun looking at zoning and moving forward on that track. And my opinion at this point would be that the township should not change any zoning, but rather stay on track and focus on review township-wide of our zoning and the needs for the next 10 years. But I'll open it to the board for, if there's any other comment.
Yeah, I'll just kind of add on to that. Going off of what Tom mentioned, I think that this proposal is very inconsistent with the comprehensive plan that we recently adopted. And it's not only inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but by and large, I think it's inconsistent with what residents have asked this board and previous boards to prioritize. We're not often in a position to have a great degree of discretion with regards to development matters, with regards to zoning. If a property is zoned a certain way, we largely have to follow that. But in this instance, we do have discretion, as Attorney Zader said. So I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I would not be in favor of moving forward with any sort of rezoning on this parcel at this time. We need to look at this at the 10,000-foot level, go through not only the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, but update our zoning ordinance in full and make sure that when we're updating the zoning ordinance, we're following the recommendations of the comp plan. We're also following the recommendations of the public. We've seen over the last few years, other proposed developments similar in type to this, and they've largely provoked a lot of public safety concerns, a lot of traffic concerns. So I think we need to be extra cautious. So to rezone this property, in my opinion, at this point in time, would be a mistake. I would not be in favor of moving forward this, but I don't speak for the entire board.
I concur with our Commissioner Roth and also our township manager, Mr. Pertrucci. My concern would be that if we did change the zoning here, does that mean we have to change zoning somewhere else in the township to allow for, quote, "the industrial part of this that we're giving up"? And that would be a very big concern of mine.
Any other board comment?
I do have a comment. I agree with our manager, Tom Pertrucci, and also Commissioner Roth. It's zoned a certain way. We just finished the comp plan. We need to go forward with the zoning that is complementary to the comp plan. I don't see it fitting in here. I respect the effort. It must have taken a lot of time and planning to come up with this plan, but I don't see it as a good fit here, and it doesn't comply with the existing zoning. So, thank you.
Any other comment? None?
So we have a consensus not to entertain a zoning change at this point. Mike?
I would concur, and I think that our recommendation should be to not entertain, not even send to planning. Just at this point in time, I don't think we should be entertaining this request.
Everybody's in agreement?
Commissioner Kelly, if I could ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, and not, just a question. So Paul or Dr. Khan, had you evaluated uses of this property that would be compliant, you know, with the current zoning and rejected them for whatever reason?
Well, I did.
Because you did, it's obvious you put a lot of time and effort and thought into this. So that's what prompts my question.
Well, we looked at the area, and notwithstanding, I know there's a lot of industrial. I've done it. I've designed it. But across the street, you have the assisted living and the independent living apartments that have yet to be built that are directly across the street. So there is a residential component of density moving into the area. And there are a few single-family homes out there. I've looked at this site several times for industrial, and we can put a warehouse in here. And we could probably put, you know, 150, 200,000 square foot warehouse on the site. And we'll disturb a lot more natural features to do it. We just thought this was a better, you know, disturbing nine acres versus 25 of the 40 was a better fit for this. So there was a logical approach to it. I don't think we're looking to rezone this to a residential zone. We're looking to work with the overlay that you have built into the ordinance and maybe a little bit of text editing on one or two items, and this would fit. If I'm not, I don't want to speak out of turn, but it needs a little bit of work, but it's not a complete... We weren't looking to rezone this to a different zone.
Yeah, he is talking about the industrial refit overlay that is currently over that tract and then some of the adjoining tracks. That already does permit residential, I think the maximum is 15% of the tract can be residential. But that would mean that the balance of the tract would have to be developed industrially as well. So to change that some way, I guess it could be done. You could also take the existing IC-1 zone and do some text amendment to that to allow apartment buildings in there as well. Those are kind of the two items that we see as possible. But I believe, in my opinion of the two, doing a text amendment to the IC-1 zone would be an easier do than to, you know, go in and tweak the overlay.
Is it permitted right now?
Under the overlay district, it is permitted. As I said, this is an industrial refit overlay. So a maximum 15% of the tract can be developed with residential. However, the balance of the tract has to be developed as industrial.
So this is not permitted in the current zoning ordinance?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that. Greg, 15%, is this 40 acres? So 15% would be six acres of residential. And this is a little bit more than that, right?
I mean, nine.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any way, Paul or Dr. Khan, that you have any thoughts or plans that could be consistent with the current way it's zoned and with the overlay?
Possibly, yeah, sure. I mean, we, yes, we can certainly look at that.
I think what we're hearing tonight is concern, a lot of concern. But I'm also trying to understand, you know, what is it that can be done that doesn't require any serious, let's say, changes to the overlay or the existing zone?
Definitely not asking for spot zoning. It's not. I would never do that to begin with. I've been doing this way too long to ever walk into a township and ask for that.
That also, obviously, you mentioned it. That's a concern.
Yeah. So we're looking to find a way to fit into the ordinance.
Yeah.
Dr. Khan's more of a residential developer. That's not to say we can't, you know, slide this around and bring in an industrial component. It will work.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So just with regards to the comprehensive plan and the land use that Tom mentioned, we talked about place types, and one of the place types that we've talked about is conservation-based subdivision. So the concept here where they're concentrating development on a specific section of that parcel and conserving the rest of that parcel kind of fits into that. But we need to dig into what's going to, how that conservation-based subdivision is going to work. So I think, you know, looking at this and, you know, looking at the positive side, is there some of that conservation? And I think having that opportunity to flush that ordinance out and that zoning or that use, however we handle that, is how something like this could move forward. But I think having that time to really focus in on that conservation-based subdivision is really what we're intending to do as part of this zoning rewrite.
So that I understand you, Dave. Thank you for that explanation. That would be done in conjunction with the overall zoning review that we're embarking upon. Now that the comprehensive plan is complete.
Yes.
Any other comment at this time?
I would agree, Dave. Thank you for that, that this would be something that could be considered once our zoning ordinance has been reviewed and any changes adopted. Until that time, I, at this point, am not in favor of proceeding. If anybody else is or has a different comment. Sounded like everybody was in agreement.
I'm in agreement with that, but I'm wondering if the board would give some encouragement or at least acceptance of an alternate plan that would fit with the existing zoning, or not?
Well, the applicant always has the opportunity to work with staff to present a plan within current zoning. Absolutely.
Okay. So maybe that's what you were able to achieve this evening?
Okay, that's fine.
I would agree completely with that.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to Agenda Item 4B, we have a citizen, Ronald DiLorenzo, would like to address the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ronald DiLorenzo. I live at 2360 James Drive. From 1977 to 1985, I served as the Director of Community Development, Assistant Township Manager, and Township Secretary for Southway Hill Township. I purchased 2360 James Drive in Fernwood Terrace subdivision in 1977. As Township Secretary, I was required to live in the township. I moved into home late 1977. Sometime later, I discovered that several sections of curbing along the corner were set at the wrong elevation. There was as little as 1/4 inch of clearance from the McAdam cartway to the top of the curb. This was observed by Herb Bender when he and I met on the site on April 26. The curbing was never put into township standards. A lot of finger pointing went on in 1977 as to who was responsible to fix this problem, but no one ever said it was my problem. The bottom line was that the township had accepted the dedication of the street from the developer. As such, it was now the township's problem. Township Manager Merritt Heine, Township Engineer John Pitcock, and I met in the manager's office to resolve the problem. None of us wanted to dig up the brand-new street and replace the curbing and have a big patch placed on the street. We agreed that if I, as the property owner, could live with it, the township would defer replacing the curb until the street needed to be repaved. No one thought that it would be 46 years until the street was to be repaved. Our agreement was between three friends who worked together. I never thought that it would have to be in writing. The fact that the curb wasn't constructed to township standards was clearly evident. When there is usually 46 inches of clearance from the cartway to the top of the curb, my curb was less than that, with one section having only about 1/4 inch of clearance. Township Manager Merritt Heine passed away in 1981. Township Engineer John Pitcock passed away a number of years later. When Herb and I met on the site, he told me that it was the property owner was now responsible to replace the curb at my expense. My position is that I bought the home with reliance upon the fact that it was in an approved township subdivision and built to township standards. The fact that the curb was initially set too low is not the fault of the current or any future property owner. I'm here tonight to ask the township to acknowledge its responsibility to replace the curbing that is not built to township standards. It's about 36 lineal feet. As the previous secretary, Township Secretary, I should say, I ask that the board pass a resolution acknowledging that the township will replace the defective curbing in front of 2360 James Drive. This will eliminate any future confusion over the matter. In one week, I will turn 80 years old. My sons will inherit this property when I and my wife pass away. I don't want them to be told that it is their responsibility to pay for the replacement of this curbing. I have a suggestion as to how to allocate the cost of replacing the curbing. When I left the township after seven and a half years of service, I left a substantial amount of money on the table, as the rule was that you needed 10 years of service to vest your retirement, those retirement funds in order to the benefit of the township. Some of those funds could now be used to replace this curbing in front of my home. I'm sure that someone will say that, well, we can't replace the curbing, as it will set a precedent, and we'll have to replace everyone else's curbing in the township. Let's be honest. Unless all other variables are held constant, it is not a precedent. You won't find another similar circumstance anywhere. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I have copies of my written remarks that I'd like to also leave with the members of the board. Let's see if I can get them out of my file folder.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I'm going to ask our township manager or Herb, if you could give us any guidance on this matter before we...
Yeah, as alluded to by Mr. DiLorenzo, township management and staff, the concern is setting a precedent where, consistent with the first-class township code and past precedent and past practice, we have put the burden of responsibility of maintaining curbing on the homeowner. So this would deviate from that practice if the board were inclined to replace this curbing here.
Yes, but this curbing was put in initially at the wrong elevation. It was never correct.
And that should have been corrected by the township at that time, or the developer at that time, I should say.
The management of the township at the time, including myself as part of the management team, decided to defer doing that. I was 34 years old. I just bought my first brand-new house. I didn't want the curbing all tore up and the township street messed up. I was willing to live with it.
Now, the security at that time, there ostensibly would have been security held that should have been used to fix this problem at that time. That's the stance of Herb Bender and I at this time.
I had one other question for our solicitor from a legal perspective. What would your...
I would say two things. First off, Mr. DiLorenzo, you had mentioned that the road was dedicated, which I'm sure is correct. Even though dedication occurred, and presumably, I'm sure you're inferring, that the curb is located within the township right-of-way that was dedicated.
Oh, yes.
The curbing, and for that matter sidewalks, are, under township regulations, the responsibility of the property owner. And the first-class township code authorizes a township to place that responsibility for maintenance on the property owners. So it is within the board's right to insist that that be followed.
But isn't it true that I relied upon the fact that we're in an approved township subdivision, therefore that the road should have been constructed to township standards? The sewer lines, the water lines, the curbing should all have been constructed to township standards? It was all inspected by Ruhr-Bachmann installed the curbing by the township engineer, and I don't know if the developer did it or not, but I, as a property owner, wouldn't inspect it. Would you inspect curbing if you're buying a home?
I certainly understand your frustration, but I'm not in a position to comment on what may have occurred that many years ago.
Because of a long period of time expired, and I live with it, you know, I'm at the... James Drive is a hill. You're at the bottom of the hill. I'm at the intersection of James and Molinaro. The water runs down my street, hits that curb, and turns right and goes down Molinaro Drive. The water just goes into my yard. You're repaving that road right now. And when you put the final wearing coat on, I'm afraid that that's going to be over the top of that tiny curbing that's there, and everything is going to flow into my yard.
It will not be on top of the curb. It will be put back the exact same way. We're milling out an inch and a half, and we're laying an inch and a half.
Well, we'll see.
Any board comment at this time? Nothing? At this time, I would take this matter under advisement and ask the township staff, our township manager and director of operations, to continue to work with the resident to assure that the road is repaved exactly the way it is now, not to create any additional problem in that particular area.
We will certainly do that.
If you would stay in touch with Mr. DiLorenzo.
What about the fact that there was a promise made by the manager of the township that they would replace this road? Don't we have any integrity anymore in this township? Just because the manager passed away, and there's been several managers since then, you're not going to abide by the agreement that he had made?
That's why when I met out there, I asked if you had it in writing. I don't know what was agreed upon. I was just born... I don't know what was agreed upon. I was just born when this agreement was made. So I don't know if there is an agreement.
All right. You don't know what... Okay, let me tell you one thing. I really take offense at anyone's questioning my integrity. I spent 23 years in the Navy as a Navy Intelligence Officer. I held the highest clearance this government had. I had access to all kinds of top-secret code word protected material for 23 years, based on a special background investigation by the FBI. I'll hold up my integrity against anyone's in this room, anytime, anyplace.
I'm not questioning your integrity at all, sir.
If I said there was an agreement, there was an agreement.
Okay.
All right. I think I've had enough.
Thank you, sir. Moving on then to Agenda Item 5. We have the approval of our April 19th, 2023 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. They've been distributed to the board. You had a chance to review them. Are there any comments or questions at this time? I will need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6A, Ordinances. We have a motion requesting permission to send said ordinance to LVPC for their review, an ordinance amending the Southway Hall Township zoning ordinance by adding Section 350-13F zoning certificate of use and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights to enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. And I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
I'm going to hand this one over to Greg. I can just briefly, it was here at the BOC. We sent it down to Planning Commission and Legal Review. It's gone through that process, and now we're back. And Greg can highlight some of the details.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Dave. Stealing the thunder there, okay. As Dave said, this is something that you did see on February 15th. It did go to Planning Commission. It got the legal review. At last month's meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended to forward this on with an adoption recommendation. They had one minor change to it. It was simply almost typographical in nature. So it's very similar to the ordinance that you saw on the 15th. So at this point, with that recommendation, the next step would be to send this to the LVPC for their review period. And once that comes back with a recommendation that seems to be favorable, we can then move ahead with the advertising.
Does the board have any additional comments? We did see this recently. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, Advertise for Possible Adoption: Motion to Adopt Said Ordinance. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims or delinquent accounts. Tom Petrucci, if you please assist.
Thank you. Official action is requested in the form of a motion to adopt this ordinance. For reference, Ordinance Number 1039 was duly adopted February 6, 2019, and is currently in effect to appoint Portnoy Law Associates as a solicitor of the township for the limited purpose of collecting unpaid claims pursuant to the Municipal Claims and Tax Leans Act. Portnoy is now requesting that the township adopt a revised amended ordinance in order to memorialize certain changes, which I will briefly summarize as follows. The Consumer Financial Protection Bureau released new guidelines that became effective on November 30th, 2021, that caused Portnoy to have to change the first step of its collection process. As a result of the new guidelines, Portnoy began sending model validation notices as part of the initial contact with the property owner. In 2022, they did so at no charge. In 2023, they now must assess a $25 fee. This initial cost will be charged directly to the property owner and not the township. And this is actually less of a cost overall, since the previous step was to send a $40 charge with concluding certified postage that was also assessed to the property owner at the first step. Now, that would move to the second step. So with some other nominal changes to the fee schedule, which are incorporated in this ordinance, I would seek a motion to adopt it. The notice of advertisement ran in the Parkland Press on April 19th. To date, no inquiries have been received at the township concerning this ordinance.
Thank you, Tom. I'll open up to the board if there's any questions or comments on this agenda item, any from the public. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Resolution 7A. We have a resolution amending Resolution 2020-62, which granted conditional preliminary final approval to a minor plan entitled 1420 North 22nd Street. And I'll ask our Director of Community Development... Or actually, I'll ask Greg Adams, our planner, to please present.
Thank you. This is an application to subdivide the property located at 1420 North 22nd Street. The plan basically proposes a subdivision of the 20,000-square-foot lot into two lots. The plan was approved at your May 18th, 2022 meeting. Condition 17 states that the plan has to be recorded within 12 months. We are approaching that deadline, and there's just a few minor things left to accomplish. So the applicant is in here tonight to request a six-month extension. There are four relevant conditions left to be addressed, and some of them are interrelated. The applicant is also requesting that the fee in lieu of land dedication be submitted prior to building permits being submitted for the newly developed lot. Staff has no issue with that. We can certainly place that at Tickler's. At any time when that lot is... A permit is brought in, that will show up and have to be dealt with at that time. So I believe Mr. Karadesh is here, I believe with his daughter, to present any items and answer any questions.
Very good.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Rama. Thanks for having us today. This is my father, Nadon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Greg Adams explained, that most of the conditions have been completed. There's just a few that have been left, one being the easement condition, which we have been in contact with a lawyer to get that situated. And then the second being the open space fee that we wish to delay until a new lot is starting to build onto the land. And we just wanted to ask for those conditions to be adjusted. Yeah, for the six-month delay. The reason being that in the last couple of months, my dad had had medical leave from his job, and that had delayed our effort into this project in terms of monetary and time. So that's why we're requesting that delay.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this agenda item?
I usually ask the question, I mean, is six months, do you think, is adequate?
Yes, I think it's more than adequate.
Greg, you... Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7B, A Resolution Amending Resolution 2020-18, which granted conditional preliminary final approval to a major subdivision plan entitled KRE Commercial, Springview Commercial 2. And I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. Once again, this is an application to further develop the properties located at 559 Citronia, 569 Citronia, and 4590 Broadway. The plan proposes to consolidate the three lots and proposes a 3,400-square-foot commercial building and a 34-space parking lot. This was originally approved back in January 15th, 2020. And there have been a number of extensions created since then. The sticking point at that point had been a SALDO waiver request. One of the waiver requests was that on the Broadway driveway did not meet the SALDO requirement for separation distance from the intersection of Broadway and Housman. The approval of that waiver request was conditioned on a number of things, which included PennDOT review and PennDOT approval of a no right turn on red. That did not occur. PennDOT actually stated that the intersection does not meet the warrant for that no right turn on red. The township was asked to reiterate that our application do have that. PennDOT, once again, said, "No, it does not meet the warrant." So at this point, the applicant did come back, revise their plan for the driveway to be right turn out only. This did go to the Public Safety Commission earlier, and they had no comment to the plan. So at this point, they're here to ask not only for the extension, but to have the one phrase in there about PennDOT approval of the no turn on red removed, because they are no longer proposing a left turn out of that driveway. So those are the two items to be discussed tonight. The applicant's team is here to present the plan and answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening.
Evening. I'm Ed Murphy. What he said, really isn't much to say. We were here in November. Everybody was good with what we were doing because we, as Greg said, we removed the option or the proposal to make a left turn turn out of our site on the Broadway. So we needed to clean up the plan to reflect that, went to Public Safety. Now, all we have to do is record the plan. And in the course of getting ready to do that, staff recommended we modify the waiver to eliminate the reference to seeking PennDOT approval for no right on red. So that's the only reason we're here. And to Mr. Kennedy's question, the prior applicant, Greg thought, even though we don't need six months, he thought six months would be appropriate just to make sure we have enough time to record it. So the plan hasn't changed since we last talked to you in November about it. That's why we're here.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any board question on this agenda item?
Greg, have you received the acceptance of conditions form? Thank you.
This is the acceptance of the conditions as of this afternoon with the change.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Osborne?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. First of all, I'd like to thank you for working with the board. I know it's been tough in a long time. I think you could probably agree, though, that the board has been consistent. And what you're presenting tonight is something that is now consistent with what you've heard. So I want to thank you for, you know, your continuing efforts in a productive way. So I just have a question that is kind of an obvious thing, but I just, out of curiosity, your desire to have the condition of the right turn on red off of Citronia Road, what value is that to you in this case? Just curiosity. I understand text-wise why, you know...
Well, the reason we desired it at one point was when we were proposing the left turn out of our site on the Broadway.
Yes.
And we had been expecting PennDOT to support that, and they didn't.
Yes.
And then township was always uncomfortable with that left-hand turning movement out of the driveway anyway. So when we agreed to accept the restriction on no left turn, there's no reason to have the no right on red request anymore.
Okay, so it's just a cleanup of the resolution?
That's all it is.
Got it. Okay.
Which, had Greg not brought it to our attention, we probably would not have thought to do it. So he's the smart guy, not us. We're just cleaning it up. We had not...
Actually, you're kind of smart to agree to it, though.
Yeah. It takes a while, but finally we get the hit. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Greg, did you have something to add?
I did. Just so you understand that if you do move forward and adopt the amendment to the resolution, this would be, in essence, the plan is ready to go. The Township Engineer will review the plan one more, at least one more time, to ensure that the final design on that is what we're looking for, and then it will be recorded.
Any other comment from our engineer?
No, no. We talked about it this afternoon, and that makes sense, instead of having to come back again.
Okay, very good. Okay, if we're all in agreement and there's no public comment, then do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Good.
Good luck with your project. Moving on to Agenda Item 7C. We have a resolution extending conditional offers of employment for the entry-level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to candidate number 03471, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. I'll call on our Police Chief, Glenn Dorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We're here again for the process portion of the hiring process for us per Civil Service regulations. We need the approval for candidate number 03471 in order to start a background investigation and move forward with conducting that investigation and trying to get some people hired. So just the process at this point.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this agenda item? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8A. We have a motion to proceed with advertising of bid regarding tank maintenance project. I'll call on our Director of Operations, Herb Bender.
All right. Southway Hall Township Water Department is respectfully requesting permission to advertise a bid for the water tower maintenance contract. This project consists of interior and exterior cleaning of the PPNL Tower Brickyard Reservoir and the Cedar Brook Reservoir. Also, the interior inspections of Jacoby Water Tank, Kmart, Dorney, and Birch Tank also. Those, we are trying to be proactive with those four to get these inspected. These do not require it, but we want to make sure we stay ahead of the curve so we don't ever get a hit on the water system being stored in those tanks. The township staff would drain the tanks. The contractor would clean and perform the inspection. If there are no issues to be addressed immediately, township staff will then refill the tanks and put the tanks back in service. The awarded contractor would be required to submit reports of the inspection findings, which would include the condition of the tank and the areas of concern. This project will be a five-year maintenance contract for these cleanings and inspections. And we do have it budgeted this year in the Water Capital.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. And thank you to both yourself and Donna for preparing this very comprehensive bid contract for our review. I just had a simple question. You're going to drain the tanks and then clean them. The one up at Brickyard is 3 million gallons of water.
Goes right down the side of the hill at a slow release.
Slow release.
Yes. And we will notify the fire departments, too. When we do empty that reservoir, they have to go to tankers on that side. So there is a message put out to all the fire departments, letting them know that that reservoir is offline. If they have an active fire, and it's pretty big, they will have to bring tankers in to fight the fire.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just had one additional question. During the draining, cleaning, inspection, how long would it be out of service? Take Brickyard, for example.
Brickyard, which is our biggest one of 3 million gallons. Last time they did it, we were offline for three days.
I do have a question as well. With the shutdown of the tanks, will there be any interruption of water to residents or businesses?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Also, I have a question about the mentioning of engineer throughout the whole notice. When it says each contractor will have their own engineer, does engineer refer to, will they have a private engineer working with them? Or will it be our township engineer?
That would be Spot Stevens and McCoy, our utility engineer. They would work hand-in-hand with them, along with township staff, if we do have something that needs to be corrected right away.
Okay. Another question about the paint materials. Will the colors be consistent with what they are now?
The only one that gets painted is the PPNL Tower. So yes, it'll be blue, just like it is now. We were going to look at a different color, but then there's more involved to it, so we're going to leave it the same color. And you'll see, this is the first time this has ever been... And you'll see, this is the first time this has ever been included in this bid spec. We have always did a separate one. I'm hoping to bring the price of that bid down since they're getting other work from us. That's why we incorporated it right into this bid also.
Okay. And one final question. The large tank on Brickyard, it's concrete. Will there be any sealant or protective paint so it maintains its integrity, like on the outside?
No. They will pressure wash that and give us a full report. And they, every year, they give us the reports on every tank, whether, the one year it's inside and outside, the following year it's just the outside, and it goes back to the inside and outside. And every year, we get a very detailed report. So if there is anything, if it's an immediate fix, yes, we will have it fixed right away to address the issue. If the gentleman's letting us know this is going to have to be done in the near future, then we will budget for that the following year.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Moving on to Motion 8B, we have a motion to proceed with advertising a bid regarding Brickyard Road retaining wall project. Is that, Herb, will you be taking this one as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
The current retaining wall located at 1986 Brickyard Road is leaning towards the residence home. This retaining wall was installed when the water line was run down Brickyard Road from the reservoir to tie in the Huckleberry Road. This current bid will only be for the removal of the retaining wall, and Public Works will begin doing all the grading and roadwork so we don't have to reinstall a retaining wall at this location. We have been working with Tony Towler Reader from Pickcock on this design. Once we get this bid advertised, we're going to have a mandatory meeting on site, and the contractor is going to tell us how they're going to take this wall down. This way, it's on them to get it down and not on the township if something would happen here.
Thank you, Herb. I had a question. So the wall was initially installed when the water line was run down Brickyard to tie in to Huckleberry. Is that line still there?
Yes.
But we don't need a retaining wall?
No, we can do grading there to make sure we have the coverage so the pipe doesn't freeze and all that. Myself and Tony, we have met out there five, six times already, running different ideas to make sure we can make this work.
Very good. Thank you.
And we have kept the homeowner in the loop the whole time while we've been out there.
That was my next question. I took a drive-by this weekend.
He actually prefers that we don't put the wall in.
Excellent. Any other board comment, question, any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
Motion, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, a motion requesting permission to begin working on modification to the Act 537 Plan. And I'll call on our township manager, Tom Petrucci.
Thank you. Official action is requested from the Board of Commissioners to receive authorization to proceed with the first step of the Act 537 Official Plan Update by following the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Public-to-Public Wastewater Disposal System Transfers Act 537 Planning Requirements checklist. SSM Group will be utilized for technical guidance concerning this portion of the project. Township staff has already commenced compiling the background information that will be required for the project. This is budgeted under sewer funds, Act 537 Plan, in the amount $120,000. However, we're not going to use that amount, anywhere near that amount, in this phase of the project.
Excellent. Very good. Any board question on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, 4457 Crackers Port Road, Chabad Lubavitch of the Lehigh Valley Improvement Security Release Certification Number One. Greg Adams, our planner, will present.
Thank you. This is the Chabad Lubavitch of Lehigh Valley Project, which is just down the road, down that way on Bulldog. You've probably seen it under construction for a while now. They have completed a significant amount of public improvements and have asked for security release for $106,952.18. So we are requesting that you authorize the township manager to sign the release letter to the financial institution when he is satisfied that everything is complete and ready to go.
And I would respectfully request to add the township solicitor to review as well to conditionally approve the request subject to meeting all of our conditions.
Okay. So do we need to rework the language, or is there something else we need to do on our end?
No, we're okay, as long as that gets reflected in the minutes.
Okay. And attorney's aid are recovered? Okay. Is there any board comment on this agenda item? Any from the public? A hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion with the addition of comments from Tom Petrucci?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Greg. Moving on to Agenda Item 8E, a motion requesting permission to reject bid number 2023-03 with regard to the pavement markings project. I'll ask Herb Bender to present.
All right. One bid was received and opened on Friday, April 28, 2023, for pavement markings. This bid was advertised twice in local publication as required by law. Sixteen potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the PennBid website. The prices received by Crylon Corporation are considerably higher than the last contract pricing and feel they do not represent a normal, justifiable cost increase. Attached is the bid tabulation, also showing the pricing from the last contract from A1 Traffic. Southway Hall Purchasing and Public Works Department are requesting the board to reject the bid response received by Crylon Corp., so the township could put forth another bid in paper form to exhaust all efforts for a reasonably bid response. And just so you know, we did reach out to everyone who was involved in this co-op bid, and they were all in agreeance to reject these bids. And just so everyone knows, Palmer Township's in it, City of Allentown, Whitehall Township, Hanover Township, Bethelm Township, Lower Salkin, and ourselves.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. Again, please thank our staff, Donna, for.
Yes, Donna put a lot of work into this and did a tank maintenance.
And the presentation in our packet is very helpful, so thank you.
Great.
Is there any board discussion on this agenda item?
I just have a quick question, Herb. Has there been any discussion with any of the vendors as to why the cost was escalated so high? I mean, other than this typical inflation, oil prices?
This was actually the first time this bid was ever done on PennBid. This was always a paper bid before. We were hoping to get a lot more responses by putting it on PennBid. And this company is actually, after talking to Donna, is going to subcontract this. So I don't know whatever, if they're looking for theirs, plus the subcontractor and the next thing. But I mean, as you can see in your packet, these prices are very high.
Agreed.
And to further clarify, there's another bid for line striping, which we're not going to reject. That's going to be on the May 17 meeting, and those prices were more consistent with past prices. So this is an anomaly of sorts.
And the long line striping bid, we did see an increase, but if you do the math from what paint cost then to what it costs now, it's right in line.
Here's, was that a paper bid?
No, that was PennBid also.
Okay.
Any other board comment? Any from the public? Do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Correspondence and Information Upcoming Meetings. I'll ask Tom Petrucci to please review.
Thank you. The upcoming meetings are as follows. Monday, May 8, 6:00 p.m., Special Board of Commissioners meeting for candidate interviews for the Planet Commission and the Civil Service Commission. Monday, May 8, at 7:00 p.m., Parks and Rec Board. Tuesday, May 9, 6:00 p.m., Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, May 10, 10:00 a.m., Civil Service Commission. Monday, May 15, 6:00 p.m., Green Advisory Council. Wednesday, May 17, Board of Commissioners. All of the meetings will be held here at the Township Building, and all the details will be posted on the Township website.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Direction Discussion. First, Item A is Civil Service Commission rules possible revision, and I'll ask Chief Dorney to please present.
We wanted to, after discussions with the Civil Service Board, we wanted to check the appetite of the Board of Commissioners to see whether or not you would entertain some potential changes that the Board, Civil Service Board, has mentioned in order to potentially get more candidates for recruitment and retention for the department. Some of the standards that we have in place are somewhat outdated and also maybe cumbersome for us in the hiring process, just like tonight, to come through and present one name or one number. And if that doesn't work out, and I don't have another three names in front of us from the Civil Service before the next meeting, I then have to wait another potentially 30 days to get in front of the Board again, to get more people certified. So there's some things that we want to work with, and I would say the vast majority of the work would be done by myself and Tom and our new HR director, as well as the Civil Service Board, and have that discussion, and then essentially make sure that everything that we discussed falls within the guidelines of the first-class Township Code through Civil Service, as well as everything just legally being founded in the standard through the Solicitor for the Civil Service Commission. And then if we were able to put a package together, obviously, that would have to come back to the Board of Commissioners to be adopted. But we wanted to see what kind of feedback, or whether or not you think you have the appetite even to entertain changes moving forward. And I'm certainly open to, anybody can send us the email. If there's any suggestions you have, we would like to hear that as well, so we could try to incorporate it, to try to get more candidates, better candidates, and try to beef up the hiring process and make it a little bit more smooth.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll just ask our township manager, is there any comment from administrative?
Yeah, I think this approach makes sense that, you know, administration can work out the particulars first, and before we have the township labor attorney involved, so that we can all get on the same page and then have, you know, one review, have it all clean and ready to present to the Civil Service Commission, as well as then the Board of Commissioners. We just wanted to make sure you were inclined for us to even begin looking at this. There's, you know, as alluded to by Chief Dorney, there's some possible opportunities to help assist with our recruitment process, as well as some other administrative items that we potentially want to review.
Excellent. I don't have a problem with this. I'm in agreement to move forward and have the administration work with you chiefs to see what we could come up with as a framework, and then send that over to Civil Service and back to us for recommendation. Any board comment?
I would agree. Police recruitment isn't getting any easier, unfortunately. So I'm interested to see what staff and Civil Service Commission comes up with them. Look forward to hearing about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? Okay, very good. Moving on to Direction, Item B, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. And Tom, will you be presenting?
Yes, I will. Okay. So township staff is requesting direction on how to proceed with a possible revision to the current shade tree commission ordinance, which is currently found in Chapter 17 of the Township Code, as well as the overall general enforcement of shade trees in the township. So we've internally discussed possible corrective items at length. And basically, I wanted to summarize some of the observations that have been reported to me and, again, discussed internally. I want the board to be aware of it before we go down a path, that we wanted to get your feedback. First is, we often receive feedback from residents that the shade tree commission ordinance is not necessarily uniformly enforced across the township, meaning if you were to obtain a permit to remove an existing shade tree that then alerts the township that you are doing so, and then you're required to replace it. However, if a resident were to take action to remove a tree without contacting the township, we may never become aware of that missing tree. So this has been going on for a long period of time. And then, so we have areas where it's gone unnoticed. You know, it would be onerous to constantly monitor all the shade trees all the time. So it's very much a self-reporting system. But in the past, the township has not aggressively enforced provisions of the shade tree ordinance. So for example, if you don't replace the tree, you know, it's, there's an enforcement action, but it's not, it's not one, what one would call aggressive. Okay? So staff and I and management overall envision an amendment to the shade tree ordinance whereby the ordinance would be broken out into two separate ordinances. So Chapter 17 would be amended to become consistent with the first-class Township Code in terms of the construct of the commission itself, including appointment of members, reporting requirements, and the delegation duties. A second new chapter with a number to be determined would then be developed to provide for the enforcement of shade trees across the township in a manner that is consistent with the first-class Township Code, as well as generally consistent. Next item would be, we feel it would be prudent to develop a GIS inventory of all the shade trees to provide you with an example of another community that has done so. We have the technical equipment to do this. It's a question of getting staff and/or interns to go out into the field, collect the data with our GPS units, and then upload it into the GIS. That would help with tracking and enforcement. And as I alluded to earlier, before we started working on these, I wanted to make sure that this is, that the board, first of all, wants to keep the program intact and that we're moving in the right direction. We'll have to circle back with you on these ordinance changes, but, you know, I wanted to identify the benefits of shade trees, as well as some of the issues with shade trees in general that have been raised as well. But benefits include shelter for animals and humans, improvement of air quality. It's important to note that the Lehigh Valley actually ranks among the worst 100 metropolitan areas for air quality, as per a recent State of the Air Report published by the American Lung Association. And shade trees, of course, remove millions of tons of CO2 emissions annually. Aesthetics, beautification of the township. With stormwater, tree canopy has actually reduced the amount and rate at which rainwater strikes the ground, thereby reducing erosion and stormwater management costs theoretically. Increased property values, this is quantifiable data collected by the U.S. Forest Service. So it's actually, it's, you know, it's not pulled, it's not just saying that it's increasing property values, it actually quantifiably does. Pedestrian safety, shade trees can reduce traffic speeds and buffer pedestrians from moving vehicles. A few, a couple of issues, as alluded to with the enforcement, in addition to that, the township is currently responsible for maintaining, for example, trimming the entirety of the shade tree, not just where it meets the public right of way. This is a burden for our public works staff. We don't have the manpower to do that. And we want to take a look at a different alternate way of maintaining them if we're to continue to keeping them. The other issue is the placement of the trees themselves. We want to do so in a way that it does not impact utilities, and we want to clearly spell that out in our requirements. And finally, as alluded to, the ordinance does not currently prescribe penalties for violating the ordinance provision, so then it's making it very difficult for our township administrators to enforce the ordinance.
Wow. Thank you, Tom. Thank you for that comprehensive, the information in the packet was very good, very helpful. I appreciate you adding the other township that we could look to for reference. I noted that this particular shade tree commission ordinance was adopted in 1969, so I think it is time for a review. And certainly, I have gotten a few calls from residents who had a tree removed and didn't know they had to replace one. So there has been some confusion and feedback from residents. So I thank you for bringing this to us. I think it's important to look at, and I thank you for taking a look and bringing it to us. Any other?
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to go? Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Well, I'm going to go out on a limb with some of these questions. This is interesting, and I think it's timely, and I say that, I lived in an older neighborhood, mid-1970s construction. So a lot of, some of the trees, you know, have reached the end of their useful life. I mean, they're starting to die off, and it goes over a number of years. But let me, let me go back to, I want to make sure I understand, did you say the Township is responsible for the maintenance of the whole shade tree and not just the part that...?
Yes, currently, that's the way it's done, and it does create problems for Public Works. In that, most places, it's just in the public right-of-way, so you're clearing it for public access. To do the whole tree is time-consuming. We have the equipment to do so, it's more the time. And honestly, we fall behind on it, just because we simply don't have the time or the resources to do it.
So even like, what I would call natural pruning, uplifting, or whatever the term is, that's Township responsibility for the whole tree?
Correct. And then we get complaints sometimes, you pruned it too much. So this way, if we just take care of the street side of the shade tree, the pruning will be on the homeowner, so they could have it the way they like it then also.
Lift and elevate, I think that's the term that the arborists use. And also, the difficulty that I see, the potential problems, is if the Township just does, let's say, half the tree, it's often becomes unbalanced, because the other half of the tree hasn't been touched. But that's interesting for me to learn, because I spend a lot of money pruning the trees.
We say thank you.
I've saved the invoices, by the way. But maybe that's something, I agree, we should look at it, because that's, if that's really Township responsibility, that's...
Yeah, one model ordinance, we looked at, it actually identifies like the standard that would be used by the homeowner for maintenance. So that would, you know, these are the types of things we need to dig in further, no pun intended there either. But so, basically, you know, we just, we want to get your permission to work on that and then bring it back to you.
Let me ask you another question about the contractors. Typically, a contractor will do the work, not necessarily homeowner, especially on bigger trees, you know, to take them down. But contractors are obligated, aren't they, to get a permit before they do any kind of work like this? Is that true?
I think we can separate it as a general maintenance, or are you doing major pruning, right?
Tree removal.
Well, yeah, tree removal, yes, for sure. Now, some municipalities actually go as far as, they say you can't maintain it without a permit, which, that might be a little overreaching.
Yeah.
So we have to look at that. You know, we don't want to be overburdened some either to the homeowner.
But aren't the contractors, are they, in taking a tree down, obligated to get a permit to do that, or not?
They are currently obligated, correct, Greg?
Correct. They are obligated, however, like many homeowners, some do not, out of either ignorance, willful, or otherwise. I just, from speaking to some people I know that have had similar work done, there are certain contractors that really like to follow the ordinance, and they always seek a permit, or they help the residents seek the permit. And if a homeowner would approach them and say, well, can you do this without a permit, they will refuse to do the work. Not all contractors are that way. So maybe just building off of that, as we talk about the ordinance, that there's a way to ensure enforcement on the contractors and to not just homeowners.
Commissioner Roth, that's exactly my point. I wonder if a communication to the contractors, reminding them that they have a responsibility, an obligation to, you know, if you're going to, if you're contracted to take a tree down, you need to get a permit. And that would be, that one of the ways the Township could be assured that we're doing this properly and that tree is replaced.
And in the memo, too, it mentions the current Shade Tree Ordinance does not prescribe penalties for violating ordinance provisions. That's a penalty that you could technically assign to the contractor if they're not seeking a permit, or if they haven't guaranteed that the resident hasn't obtained a permit as well.
Okay. Thank you for entertaining me. Didn't mean to uproot the whole conversation.
Just a quick question, since I don't know the answer. The comment about permits as it exists now, that is for shade trees only, as opposed to all trees on a property?
Correct, trees within the right-of-way of a public street, yes.
Thank you.
Is that information readily available on our website for a citizen to...?
I believe there is a tree page specifically for trees.
Okay, and so if a citizen came on the website, they could type in trees, and it would come up and provide guidance?
I would hope so.
Okay.
So at this stage with the ordinance, will you also look at the type of trees that can be planted?
Yes.
Are you going to be working with an arborist, or do we currently work with...?
We have, we have a good list already, which has been whittled down based on, you know, trees that are problematic. For example, the shanticleer pear is a problem, ginkgo trees with their smell, these are some examples, which the Township, you know, we continuously monitor that list, correct, Greg?
Yeah, the current list was drafted by a master gardener as part of her research project. So she looked very heavily into those trees, what was recommended, what was not, and we did change a lot of the trees on the list, I believe, 10, 15 years ago, based on that.
Yeah, I might have misspoke, the Bradford pear is the bad one, the shanticleer is the good one.
Yes.
There you go.
And aren't there some types of maples that are more prone to girdling roots? Because then you have to worry about the sidewalk lifting, and then the resident is responsible for the sidewalk, so it's...
Don't ever plant a silver maple, please. Don't.
And we also discussed, like, maybe to eliminate some of the sidewalk issues and the utility issues, make maybe smaller species sizes that don't have the roots, the root...
Cluster. Surface rooting.
Yeah.
Girdling root, yes.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Very good discussion. We look forward to you bringing this back to us then with suggested edits in the future. Excellent.
Yes, we'll bring that back to the Board.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10C, Request for Proposals, RFPs entitled Residential Solid Waste Collection, Disposal, and Recycling.
There was a question from the...
Oh, I'm so sorry to not see you. Yes, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Okay, I'm assuming it's on. It is on. Okay, Marie North, 3025 Victoria Lane. I love this conversation, as probably some of you know, if not all of you know, my husband and I have a certified stewardship forest where we live, so I follow things with trees pretty closely. And a couple of comments I wanted to make, I think it's great what you're proposing to look at the ordinance. Our neighborhood is full of the Calery pear, Bradford pear, and it's a huge problem. So I'm glad that they're, that you're taking a look at the species. One, a couple of other comments that I'd like to make is when you talk about the trimming of the trees, there is a process or an idea out there that the best way to maintain trees is to top the tree. And that is a serious no-no. And some of the individuals that do this type of work say that they do it because the homeowner insists on it. But if you want to maintain healthy trees, and you have topped trees, what happens is the tree starts sending out all of these little tiny branches, because it needs to feed itself, and you've got a much bigger problem. Then you've got an ugly-looking tree and a tree with a very heavy top. So my thought would be, when you're doing your research, looking at how you will advise residents on how to choose someone who is either an arborist or has an arborist on staff, if you're going to ask residents to do this type of work, so that you're going to get quality tree trimming and not an additional problem that you didn't anticipate. The other thing that happens in our neighborhood is when the Bradford pears were planted, I don't know what the process was back then, because that was a while back, but the trees were planted in a swale area. Okay, so that would be, I guess, so many feet back in the right-of-way, but there's a large swale there, and these trees are doing poorly, they're not meant to be in water, and the water sits there. So now you've got trees in water that are dying, and, you know, the homeowner wouldn't necessarily know that, you know, because the trees were suggested and put in by the developer. So it's a huge topic, the whole tree thing, as I'm sure Tom knows and the staff knows just by doing the research that they did. But these are just two things that jumped out to me when I heard the conversation. So I'm hoping that's helpful. If you have any other, you know, questions or whatever, you can feel free to ask me. But yeah, just wanted to make, bring those two to your attention.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your comments. Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 10C, Request for Proposals, RFP entitled Residential Solid Waste Collection, Disposal, and Recycling Services. And Tom, I'll call on you again.
Thank you. As previously reported, Waste Management will not be extending the Township's current solid waste and recycling contract beyond the end of this year. The Solid Waste Recycling Task Force has met several times and is respectfully presenting the below options for your consideration concerning the 2023 bid contract commencing 1/124. So the intent is to take your feedback tonight and then come back with the specs at the next meeting as soon as possible. But Option 1 would be that we do not change the current service options of the contract, and we bid it as we did the last contract. So there would be no change in services, other than some immaterial revisions, such as using Penn Bid, or changing, you know, the dates and the relevant times and so forth. Option 2 is more comprehensive in nature. We did come up with some items that, in an attempt to either lower the overall contract price, and at the same time, address identified service options, recognizing that the Township will likely experience a contract increase due to external environmental factors, including, but not limited to, increased fuel costs and inflation. So some of the options that we compiled for your consideration include the following. One, eliminate the Christmas tree collection, but not really eliminate it, we would do it with Public Works personnel instead of the contractor. So collection time would be January 1st through to the first week of February, and we do have the resources confirmed by our Director of Operations that we could do this. We could lower the number of bulk item collection time periods from once per week to either once per month or bi-weekly. We could build in options for alternative bid options for collection. For example, you could say garbage every week, recycling every week, which is the current way, or you could build in like Option 1A, 1B, that could have garbage every week and recycling every other week, just to see if that would help the costs. You could provide an option for household hazardous waste curbside collection as a sticker purchase price item separate, which would be, in addition to the current freon bulk and grass sticker process that we currently use. So that's an example of just adding a service, but not necessarily lowering the cost, of course. But one item we did notice is that people really don't buy the annual stickers for grass, which gives you unlimited grass, so we do recommend we just take that out of the contract. Another option would be just eliminate the sticker process, and residents would buy these services, additional services directly from the contractor. So the contractor would have to provide the prices in the bid, and we would hold them to that. But the Township would no longer be the middle entity, the resident would go directly to the contractor, and maybe the contractor could have an online website where you purchase it that way. That's another option. Contractor would need to provide an educational mailer twice per year, including recycling information with a calendar. We noted that we don't currently have this, so this would be very helpful and could probably cut down on calls we receive to the Township Office. And it also would provide the full scope of work and the collection services to be provided. We also feel it's absolutely necessary to establish a deadline for when the contract delivers toters to residents. This is probably the number one complaint we receive, is that residents say they need toters, and they wait, and they wait at times. And it's not really, it's not the fault of the Township at all, it's just, it's the lack of availability, it's, there's some customer service lag there. But ultimately, it's the responsibility of the contractor to provide the toter. So we were saying to set a parameter of 15 days, and then we could add that failure to deliver on time would be added to the list of contract violations. We recognize maybe the 15 days might get some pushback, but we wanted to just start somewhere. The contractors during the pre-bid bidding cycle might suggest a different timeframe, but we would then evaluate that. But it is not recommended that we purchase toters ourselves due to supply chain and availability issues. The city of Allentown purchases their own toters, and it's our understanding that they have a lag as well. So it's an issue across the board, but the contractors typically can buy these toters in bulk more so than one municipality, so that's one advantage there. We want to build into the contract that what type of toter we're accepting and what we're not. So for example, we could set a standard that it has to be a 15- to 20-year toter lifetime expectancy, and then it should come with a 10-year warranty. And it should be built to withstand the wear and tear of the automated collection method, with confirmation to be provided by the contractor. We need to build into the contract for a 30-yard roll-off dumpster fee for the Yard and Garden Center that are not able to be accepted by First Regional Compost Authority, or any other similar mulch yard waste center. This would be part of the weekly collection, so this is just for overflow items that we can accept that somehow make their way to the facility. They've been brought up about a reduced rate for senior citizens, however, we do note this would require the rest of the residents to somehow subsidize the reduced rate. So we wanted to get your feedback on that. We think it would be prudent for the contract to provide a dedicated local customer service line with a phone number specific to South White Hill Township, and it should be a 610 area code or toll-free number. We don't currently have that, so we end up fielding a lot of the calls, which then we just, again, we're the middle person, we're the middle entity, that has to then contact the contractor. So we thought it might be prudent to have the dedicated line straight with the contractor. And then finally, to build into the contract for the age of the equipment, meaning hauling trucks, they could not, they had to be no more than five years old, and they would need to update their equipment list each year.
Very good, Tom, thank you. I appreciate all of the time that was put in by the committee to put all these items together. I was curious, were these suggestions born out of the complaints that the Township receives on agenda?
Yes, yeah, we specifically engaged and talked to the employees of the Township that deal with this on a daily basis, so that we understood the challenges, and we were trying to solve the challenges.
Excellent. And if we put it out to bid, and for example, if one of these items wasn't something that a bidder would like to include, for example, a dedicated telephone, are they allowed to pull that item out and bid without, they'd have to bid the full contract?
We would write to contract that they have to bid on all the items. If not, it would be, it would be a defective bid.
And...
Unless in case it's like an alternate option that we say you don't have to bid on, but something like that, it's material to the bid, and if it's in there, they would have to be held to that.
Excellent.
I just have a couple of, I mean, I could go through these one by one and give feedback, but just a couple of general comments and things we should keep in mind. I think with respect to a lot of the customer service complaints, whether it be that dedicated, you know, local customer service line, whether it be, you know, responding to toter requests, and in fact, you could even loop in a number of the provisions about stickers. I think it would be in the best interest of the Township to go one way or another with all of those services, either we handle them on the administrative end, or our vendor handles them on the administrative end. I think right now for residents, that of course would be accompanied by getting the information out to the residents, but I think a lot of residents don't know who to call. And they call the Township, the Township handles certain things, then they're told to call, you know, our current vendor, they handle other things. If we can streamline that, and, you know, if we decide to build into the contract that they, you know, they would either eliminate stickers, or they would handle all the stickers, they would handle customer service, they would handle, during the deadline for toters, and then we kind of educate the public on that, would reduce the administrative burden on the Township. I also think that if there's anything we can do in-house, like the Christmas tree collection, if Public Works could handle that, that's, I think, a great suggestion, so we don't have to rely on an outside vendor to do. So we don't have to rely on an outside vendor to do. And then I think item J, the 30-yard roll-off dumpster fee for the Yard and Garden Center materials, received a number of complaints specifically about ornamental grasses, and things that FRCA is not accepting now, but that residents need to get rid of. So building that in and potentially doing that a separate discussion item at some point. Some general comments, but these are great recommendations. But I think consolidation of administrative needs, and either having the township take care of that, or the vendor take care of that, one or the other. I think a lot of residents are confused right now, and they don't know where to turn when they have a pressing need.
Yes, that's what we're observing, for sure. And honestly, our staff is good about getting the complaints or following up. But ultimately, again, we're just the entity in the middle. So.
I would say having been a person who's had questions, township staff is excellent handling that. But it would be better if we, you know, if it's the contractor's responsibility, we hopefully wouldn't even have people calling the township asking those questions. You know, we'd redirect them there right away, and would reduce the burden on our own staff.
Yes. And any questions, calls we get, we'll always still answer. It's a question of getting a better, faster, more efficient response.
I do have a comment as well. As for recycling, you know, there's an option, garbage every week, maybe alternating recycling every other week. I think that recycling should be encouraged. That's something that I don't think I would support. I think we need to have recycling every week. We need to encourage people to recycle. We need to give them good direction as to what goes in that toter, because I'm sure there's things other than the allowed recyclables that go in. But I'm also thinking that if you have a full garbage tot, actually a full recycling toter, and it's only every other week, you might have some temptation to throw true recyclables in the garbage. So I would tend to support that recycling every week. However, I think the idea with stickers, that's opened a conversation, getting it directly from the contractor himself, might be a really good idea. And Public Works, they won't be too stressed by doing this. We have the manpower. We have the means to do it, you know.
Yeah, we can get it done. Because in the winter, we actually divide into two shifts. So we have snow coverage. So they will pick the trees up on night shift between 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM. And then when they bring them back, we'll run them right through the chipper. This is the first year we actually haven't purchased mulch. So we will chip these up, mix preen in them, put them in a stockpile till the spring, and then use it as the mulch in the township parks, which we have done this year already, so.
I just wanted to make sure that it was no hardship.
No, we can take the pickup trucks, divide the crew out, and we can get them all picked up.
Going off of what Commissioner Hodges said, item G, the educational mailer. Obviously, a mailer would be a pretty decent expense on the part of the contractor, but some sort of educational literature that we could post on the website, include in the newsletter, particularly with recycling. I think most people would be shocked to realize what little percentage of recycling that they throw in their bin actually gets recycled. It's pretty low. And I know there are very strict guidelines about what types of plastics you can recycle, what types of lids are acceptable, which are not. And we don't want any bit of non-recycling ruining a whole collection. So I think definitely an educational piece, but maybe it doesn't have to be a mailer. They could just provide clear guidelines, what's allowed, what's not. And from the outset, that's always great.
Another question. When we go out to bid, is there a way that we could do a comparison, contrast, do a bid that, you know, this is what we would want or like to see, but could you give us an alternate bid by maybe removing these or doing certain, you know what I mean?
So under Pennsylvania statutes, the bid would have to be consistent for all bidders. So we can do alternative bids, but each bidder would have to have the opportunity to bid on.
Right, exactly.
So yes, we can, and that's kind of the concept of doing, like looking at weekly versus biweekly, to see, to evaluate those price differences. So yeah, we could do that for any of the service items, really, if we wanted to. But yeah, each bidder would have to have the opportunity to bid on any of the items.
Do you know of any townships currently that do offer the senior discount?
Yeah, there are some, yes.
How does that work out? Is it successful in that township?
Some of them do it by income, as well as age. So you would have to prove income and hardship. So some of them do it that way. Some of them, just basically, as I indicated, they just subsidize the amount. Some do what is called pay-by-throw, which I think at this point, that major amount of a change to our contract wouldn't be recommended, since we're already in May, and we have to get the contract done by the end of the year. But that's a pretty, pretty different way of processing garbage at this point. So we did discuss that, but we wouldn't recommend it at this time due to the time constraints we have right now. But we could certainly look at an income-based senior citizen discount, you know, which, based on the census data, this township probably wouldn't impact many residents, quite frankly. But it's something we can definitely evaluate.
Piggyback on the recycling comment, Commissioner Hodges, I agree with her that we want to encourage recycling. If maintaining it weekly is expensive, based on the parameters that you're looking at, would the township have an option to put some sort of a receptacle at the yard waste for residents to dispose of their recyclables here on those off weeks?
We currently have four of those dumpsters here already, at the Yard and Garden Center for cardboard, any kind of recycling, yes.
I did not know that.
We have the big roll-offs for the brush and the trees, and then the normal-looking dumpsters, like outside of a grocery store or something, those are for the recycling right here.
So it's cardboard and then plastics?
Metal, plastics, everything can go in those.
Very good.
Are they used heavily? Are they used to capacity?
Yes, those are emptied weekly.
Do you have any issues with people putting things in there that are not recyclable?
Yes, we have run into that already. People have thrown lumber in them, but since we have changed the way things are being done down there, it is a lot easier, and we are not getting contamination fees right now.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, Tom. You're saying that the Waste Management is not going to be extending their contract. Well, I understand that. Are they not going to bid on the new contract?
That's to be determined. Yeah, they would have the right to bid, of course.
Oh, so they would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they may or they may not.
Have now?
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering if they were just going to get out of our township?
That remains to be seen.
Okay. Whoever put the list together, Tassworth did a great job. I think there's a lot of good information in there. I think the Christmas tree idea of if Public Works can do it, and, you know, as you said, I heard they're able to do it, and then shred it, and put it through the shredder. And we have mulch, so that's a benefit in both ways, and reduce the cost overall to the waste hauler. And there's some other factors. Recycling, I agree with you, Monica, on that. But on the other hand, too, you do see people, like, we probably put out, my wife and I, we could put it out once every two weeks. There's just two of us. We just don't have that much, either recycling or garbage. So I see neighborhoods that, where I am, some people don't put their garbage out weekly because they just don't have that much. And I don't know if that's a way to, they have a smaller toter. By the way, where can you find a 15- to 20-year toter? I'd love to see one of those that's going to last that long. I mean.
That is, that's off the specs. You can spec a certain toter.
I didn't know it lasted that long.
That will come with a 10-year warranty. So if it does break, it will get replaced.
Okay. I've never seen one last that long.
Yeah, it doesn't last so long if it's hit by a truck or something, right?
Any other board comment? Any from the public?
I think I've received enough direction, unless there's any other comments, but I appreciate everyone's thorough review of this. Thank you.
And please thank all the committee members for this comprehensive list. It's very good.
Yes. Yeah, everyone did an excellent job.
Certainly did. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Old Business, Agenda Item 11A, Professional Services Agreement with Jeffrey Marshall Open Spaces in Historic Places LLC as Historic Resource Consultant for South White Hill Township. And I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please present.
Yes, so this starts the comp plan implementation updates. So we will be continually updating as we go through these implementation items. At the last meeting, we discussed the Landscape Preservation Plan. We provided an outline, kind of provided information on how we were going to roll this out. What we have before you tonight is the contract with the consultant we would like to work with. Jeffrey Marshall, he included a brief write-up resume. He's worked primarily in Bucks County area. Heritage Conservancy was the president there. So he has many years of experience. So I'm very excited by the opportunity to work with him. His specialty is historic preservation, but as his role in, at Heritage Conservancy also dealt with open space preservation. So I think we're lucky to be able to work with them, and looking forward to getting that going. Just an additional update, we are looking to do a photo survey before we have our first meeting, so we can kind of go through ideas of, in conversations with Jeff, is what would, if your aunt from Poughkeepsie was coming to South White Hall, what would you want to show her? So have that engagement with the community to get ideas of what's important to preserve, to start that conversation for that first meeting. So that's something that we're working on internally to get that up off the ground. So tonight, we're just seeking a motion to proceed with the contract.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation, Dave. Thank you for beginning the implementation so quickly, so soon after we adopted the comprehensive plan. It's very exciting. And when I read the information for this particular consultant, I was very excited and look forward to seeing what they will do, partner with the township to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any board comment?
My only comment is I think this is a great step in the right direction. Not only did the comp plan call for historic preservation, but I know personally for me, it's a passion of mine. And a lot of municipalities around us do a great job. There's a lot of places in Bucks County that do a great job. And we've been lacking in historic preservation for many years. So this is really exciting. It's a step in the right direction.
Any public comment? I'll make the motion. Very excited to approve the contract with Jeffrey Marshall.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Good luck. Looking forward to that first meeting. Moving on to Old Business, Agenda Item 11B, Green Advisory Council Environmental and Pollution Advisory Board Implementation Status Update. I'll ask Township Manager Tom Petrucci to present.
I will kick it over to the Committee of Director of, Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just note, with regards to the implementation items, as we've been going through this comp plan, we've had an opportunity to start a lot of this and get started working on some of those implementation items. So we've had four years to think about and get prepared for launching these implementation items. So I hope they start coming through pretty quickly. We started the 537 plan, so that was one of the implementation items. Not a full plan, but we'll get into that part of it. So one of the implementation items related to Advisory Committee evaluations, this was born out of a workshop that we had with the BOC that looked at advisory committees, just in general, and look at duties. And one of the things that struck us when going through that process was the overlap in duties between the EAC and the GAC. So the Green Advisory Committee and the Environmental Advisory Committee. The Environmental Advisory Committee is established by ordinance. The GAC is established by resolution. So the EAC has been on the books since 1974. It's a very common practice for municipalities to have EACs. And I think it provides an opportunity, it's been dormant. So it hasn't been, they haven't met, I don't know the last time they met. Greg's shaking his head. It's been a long time. So the idea is to reactivate the Environmental Advisory Committee. The potential is there, and this is where we're seeking input from the board, is to absorb the Green Advisory Committee into the Environmental Advisory Committee. Because there is an overlap of duties, we have a pool of volunteers that are well-rounded, well-educated, active, want to work. So we have that, that can be kind of rolled into that Environmental Advisory Committee. The other piece of this that relates to the Landscape Preservation Plan is there will be, if you may notice, the Environmental Advisory Committee has, one of their duties is inventory open space, make recommendations related to open space. That's going to be coming out of the Landscape Preservation Plan. So there will be more active duties and roles for the Environmental Advisory Committee once we get through that process. So that's our recommendation and our thoughts, and we'd love to hear some feedback.
Thank you, Dave. Similar comment. Again, thank you for another implementation item from the comp plan to just keep rolling forward. It's very exciting. I'm certainly in agreement with the proposal that you've put together with staff to have green advisory absorbed into the EAC. Very grateful for the work that the Green Advisory has done to date, and be very excited to see their work in this new role with EAC. It's another old ordinance from 1974. But to your point, I do know that many municipalities have an Environmental Advisory Council, and I'm happy to see our township rejuvenate this one and take an active role. Certainly, I know Tom mentioned earlier, the American Lung Association, our rating here in Lehigh Valley is very, very poor. And anything we can do from a township level to help environmentally educating our residents is very important. So thank you.
I have a couple of comments. So the EAC versus Green Advisory, obviously, you know, EAC is dormant, Green Advisory is very active. And one of the things that Green Advisory does well is they identify, I mean, it was in the resolution, but they identify initiatives, they make recommendations, they can, you know, do a trial run of certain environmental-related programs in the township. And I think the benefit of having an Environmental Advisory Council is not just to revert to what the 1974 ordinance says, but also to incorporate the work and the purpose of Green Advisory. That way, we have, you know, we have volunteers on Green Advisory that are very active. And that way, they cannot only serve the purpose of Green Advisory, but also review land development proposals. They can have a more active role and make recommendations on natural resource protection. The one thing I would add, if we do come back with a recommendation from staff, is first, that we should do this by ordinance, as opposed to resolution, the reconstitution or combination of EAC and Green Advisory. And second, I'm not sure what the ordinance, the 1974 ordinance provides for, but I noticed on the township website that Environmental Advisory Council has, I believe, five spots. Green Advisory has, I believe, seven active members. So if we are to reconstitute EAC and, you know, give the
So if we are to reconstitute EAC and, you know, give the dedicated volunteers from Green Advisory the opportunity to be a part of that, I think we should look at adding members to Environmental Advisory Council, perhaps expanding it to seven, like Planning Commission. I think that way, we, we don't diminish or reduce the number of people that have a seat at the table who are passionate about these topics and are working on Green Advisory now. The way we're making sure that we can give all of them a table at EAC if they choose to apply, or however that would work. But, you know, it's not just reconstituting the 1974 ordinance. It's how can we preserve the integrity and the work of Green Advisory and incorporate that into Environmental Advisory? And part of that may include adding one or two or even more seats to Environmental Advisory Council. Making sure that we're, we're kind of preserving the purpose and the structure of both, but under one committee that's really active, that has, you know, more issues and a bigger area of responsibilities that they can look into. That's my only comment is if we're going to combine these, let's just not diminish the capacity that these two groups have.
Oh, no. Brought it up, Dave. We've talked about it a few times and never really acted on it, and thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. We have a very vibrant GAC. I think it should be absorbed by an EAC. We should have that EAC. And, you know, I always wondered, what happened to it? Why did it fall to the wayside? Why did it go away? So it makes sense to me because there's more responsibilities and duties of that commission. And I'm looking forward to seeing this go forward.
Just another comment was kind of on the tail of updating the 1974 ordinance. Because EACs are established through state government and there's EACs throughout the country, throughout the Commonwealth, there are guidebooks and handbooks and all kinds of resources available for EACs to help launch programs or do different initiatives or restructure our ordinance and things like that. So there's a lot of information and material available to help guide EACs, which would be another resource for an active environmental advisory committee.
That's excellent. Thank you, Dave. Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do you need any more information from us, Tom?
No, your comments were well received and we have our marching orders.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you, Dave. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floors, is there anyone here or online who would? Yes.
I would just like to relay a message from the KRE2 applicant. As he was walking out of the building, there was a big giant rainbow as he was walking out. He just wanted to relay that.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Celebrate the end of the four year process of them coming.
Very nice. Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board? Is there anyone online, Dave? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to Agenda Item 13, Motion to Authorize Payment of Invoices and Disbursements. I need a motion.
Second.
I'll make a motion and Dave, second. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session this evening. And I need a motion for adjournment. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This most, meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.